Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Eastlime Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today's Tuesday, March 15th. This is the first in a series of departmental budget reviews that we'll be going through for the next few weeks. So, I'd like to ask everyone who is able to stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is delegations. This is where any member of the public can address anything that is on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to anything? Seeing no one, we'll move on to new business. New business is the budget reviews. We've got our review tonight of IT, building maintenance, public works, the Commission on Aging, the Eastlime Library, and parks and recreation. So, first up is Cost Center 109 for IT, and I believe we have Joe presenting? And if you could start with just your full name-
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
...and title or degree.
Thank you for having me. For the record, my name's Joe Burgaw. I'm the Director of Public Works for Eastlime. So, the best part of the start is like, so why is the Public Works Director? Just so everyone knows, in the town of Eastlime, IT presently comes under the Public Works Director. I do want to point out a few people so that you guys are aware. IT has been- IT is so important to any town. We've noticed a few years ago how critical all the different infrastructures, especially emergency services, but right now, just so everyone's aware, we're kind of piecing it by with a good effort. My Deputy Director, Bill Sheer, spends a lot of time with- Carmen Ames is the IT- is the sole person in the IT Department right now that's trying to put fires here. And the other thing is our Police Chief is our other IT Director right here. So, unless I'm missing any one, but it's just it's a- it's an IT by everyone trying to put things together, but we- about two years ago, we looked at the models of trying to figure out what- how other towns are set up, how we need to set up, and everyone's set up an IT Director and a staff. No town has one person, so we're trying to all figure that out. So, that's what I'm here to kind of talk about is the last two years and for some of the members that were on the board, we were talking about a bridge. So, what we were doing two years ago, we set up an IT Steering Committee, is we had all the key players in the room, and we said, "Okay, we got to figure this out." A big part of that bridge was to get the Police Department into the new Public Safety Building, because police services now, as the Chief could attest, is so complicated. Now, they got all cameras. There's a camera on him now, but every time I see him, he's got a camera on him. They have all the police cars, all the security systems, everything like that. All that's IT driven through the brains at the Public Safety Building, so we were trying to bridge them. Now, they're in there. So, what we're- now what you see, and this is one of the big parts of this budget, is we're trying to promote or present, put in for an IT Director. So, a more conventional, have an IT Director than have- we're going to have also another IT person in the staff as well, so it'd be the second two people. And then, we still need to have the third part of this, just so you know, there's a company, Star Computers. The owner of Star Computers, Dave Lewis, went to Eastlime High School, smart as anything, has great staff. They've served us well. Just so everyone knows, the Board of Ed, we've had discussions with the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed sits on this IT Steering Committee. They're part of it. I've asked them how we can have synergies. It's apples and coconuts with what Board of Ed's doing and what the town's doing as far as emergency services and what the Board of Ed needs. So, they do their thing, and they have a service contract that's set up to kind of attend to all the way the schools are, which is totally different, the way set up emergency services, police is and stuff like that. So, this Star Computers is very important to continue the transition. They were great in helping. I know the Chief said that they were fantastic in integrating everything to move in. Everything's gone so smoothly. So, as part of this budget, they are- they are part of this whole integration. So, that's my big pitch as far- just to know. So, what I'd like to do is dig into, since I am the guinea pig starting off, is I might as well just go through. I think you guys have all the lines in front of you. I was just going to start calling out some of the lines and see some of the things that are- and then if after- I'm assuming after each department, because I have a few here, then we can, if you have any specific questions. So, I have the sheet here, the summary sheet for Department 109. That's why you see an IT Director at the top. There's a line there. It's an additional person. So, one of the things we're missing is just someone that's 5,000 feet, looking at IT, seeing where everything is going. Right now, if something is going on, we react to it. Okay, we have to do this. We have to react to someone. That's what that person is really is. It's a visionary person to manage the whole, everything that's going on, and that's the biggest thing in this line item. The second area, Services Contracted Operations, the copier maintenance is getting bumped up by about $1,600. We did move into the new Public Safety Building, and that would pay for an additional cop machine that's needed over there. Line 200, 216, the licensing, hosting, and support for town has some increases for the annual security wall. So, one of the things in our budget, in the IT budget, is, and so maybe I don't have to get specific, is very detailed of every penny that's being spent in here. So, all that stuff is in there, if hopefully you're able to see it, but it's all broken out of what the differences are, everything that goes into here. So, that 206, there was, as I said, some increases in the annual security wall and hosting costs. Line 200, 218, other town services. There was some additional IT training. It's always kind of, you have all this IT, and then, you know, no one gets trained for anything, and then it's kind of, it goes by the wayside. So, we're trying to bump up that to make sure the staff knows what they need to do. And also, Carmen Ames, our sole IT Person, instituted backup Internet system for Town Hall. So, we're on the voiceover Internet here. When it goes down, phones go down, we're dead in the water. So, now we- she was able to get a backup Internet system, which is really important for continuity of services. And that was a little bit of additional cost. 200, 219, the annual hosting, that's for the GIS. They changed their model as far as how they bill, and GIS is so important for a lot. I mean, everyone uses GIS in the town as far as we have that GIS system that's available, but being able to update all that information can be done internally, and the licensing that's required from Esri, which is the vendor, that's why there was an increase this year to a perpetual license of $6,900, but that would save money in the future dollars. Line 200, 211, is it 211? Oh, no, I'm sorry. 200, 221, the police EMD. So, the way we broke this out a few years ago, and is all the IT for the town is within this budget, but in that 221 allows the police to operate. So, there's a lot of different things that are going on in the police that are required. If you have any specific questions, the Chief is here, but it is covered in this detailed breakdown of some of the things, like, because they've gotten away from some of the different systems and moving towards a new one. So, the big ones is the support on the body cameras and the patrol cameras, which I believe this Board last year knew about, that they had, you know, the service contracts for the cars and the body cameras. There is a Everbridge system, the warning system that the police can be able to, they can put out to have any kind of emergency notifications or something like that. That's in here, the Everbridge system, 7500. So, there's a detailed breakdown. There's also annual hosting cost. Right now, a few years ago, the town side was able to switch to the Microsoft Office packages, so everyone has up-to-date. Everything is all kosher for all the Town Hall and the Community Center, but the PD hadn't. So, they really need to get on an update, and I think, I believe they're using 2007, or it's very antiquated Microsoft Office products that we really need to get them all up to the up-to-date licensed product. So, that's what's on that breakdown for annual hosting cost. And then, the last part I do want to explain is, so with, it's on the last page here, is this current year, the STAR contract, it's kind of built out like a lawyer firm. It's a retainer. You pay them quarterly, and then they send us monthly a bill. I share that with the First Selectment and Director of Finance and the whole IT Steering Committee of what, who used what, then I find how the departments between Emergency Services, Town, and the Ambulance Association is using it. That contract was $117,000 this year with STAR. This is being proposed to drop it to $50,000, because if you have an IT Director, that person is working all, you know, full-time on Eastlime stuff as opposed to sending everything to STAR. But there's still, just so everyone's aware, there's still a role for STAR. Another thing about this budget of why that line seems, is last year, the Eastlime Ambulance Association contributes every year because they're getting IT services as well. And last year, and Anna, tell me if I'm wrong, how this is right, in this current year's budget, they, it was credited to the account, but this year, the full cost of the IT contract, so what you're seeing in your budget here is you're seeing a revenue for the first time on the first line, because that's, it's not that they haven't been paying the town. The Eastlime Ambulance Association chips in their portion of the IT. It just happens to be, the way to do it is to express the whole cost and then have a revenue attached to it. So, that's why you're seeing, it's not the first time Eastlime Ambulance Association has done that. So, it appears that the number is higher as far as it makes the operating, the expense line higher, but then you have to deduct out the revenue associated. So, you really have to look at the net budget for the IT, not just the total budget. So, it looks like the budget's up 35% when it's really up 21%, because you have to take into account that the Eastlime Ambulance Association has been contributing, and every year, we meet with, they're part of our IT Steering Committee, and we, I give them monthly reports, and they're contributing, the Eastlime Ambulance Association is contributing their fair share. It's almost, it worked out almost perfectly. I think they're 33% of the town contract, and they contribute 33%, or 33, 34% of the total amount. So, that's how it's spread. The IT is kind of broken down. As I said, there's a very detailed breakdown. I can't stress enough that this, this is really important, because it's really tough. I was in the Police Chief's office today when the Police Chief is doing IT, the Director of Public Works is doing IT, the Deputy Director of Public Works is doing IT, and then Carmen Ames is- we're all trying to pin this all together because we have one person. So, we really need to set up a more conventional system with an IT Director, another staff, even another IT Technology Person, and then, and then a STAR contract, so that the Police Chief isn't pulled away on doing all this. I mean, they're just getting going over there. You don't need the Police Chief spending a third of his time on IT. You know, I'll give it later, but just from the Director of Public Works, I'm dealing with water, sewer, and stuff like that. It's very hard to be dealing with IT, because IT is so important. You need to be spending your 100% attention to IT and where it's going. So, that's my presentation on IT. So, if you have any questions, I would like to answer them.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Joe. On the last page where you have it broken out with the proposed STAR contract and the funding-
Yep.
-the numbers for the funding don't really add up. If you look at the adopted budget, proposed budget, and then difference, it seems like maybe a decimal point got misplaced.
In which numbers? In the second column, the proposed budget line?
Yeah, the proposed and then the difference amount.
So, even though, even though I break it down into IT Support, which is $22,750,000, and Emergency Services and Eastlime, the EL, Ambulance, ELA is ELA contribution, in, in the budget line item, you have to fund the whole thing. So, you basically add Eastlime Ambulance's contribution plus Emergency Services Support. Works out to be $48,867. So, I believe that is correct, but Richard, if that isn't, then I apologize. But I looked at that multiple times when I was putting this together. The key is that you have to have the full amount of the contract. You can't take, you can't deduct out the Eastlime Ambulance's contribution.
Okay. I was just confused with the proposed budget column and then the difference amount. I thought that would be the difference amount from the previous year's adopted budget. So, for example, Emergency Services Support, $74,000, and change. Proposed Budget Fiscal Year, $22,000, $23,000, $6,000, almost $7,000. And then, you have a difference of $14,792.
So, so, you're talking, we're talking Emergency Service, the Support Contract for STAR, right? Is that correct?
The funding for it.
Yeah. So, the line item on the second page, the $48,867, you had to, you have to, on the bottom of the second page, not the third page? You have to fund the full amount.
I think, I think you're talking two different things.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm talking your last page of, before the narratives started.
Joe, where it says Emergency Services-
It's got a header of-
-Support, it says 74, adopted budget, $74,792, proposed budget, and the differential is, for instance, this line and this line doesn't come out to 630, it comes out to 629. So, there's some dollar differences in the differential amount.
Okay.
And a couple lines.
Yeah, I don't have that specific. I have this sheet, which, all right.
Okay. Yeah, it just looks like maybe those whole points got moved around or something. That, that's not that critical. Two things that are of more interest to me is the IT Director.
Yes.
Will that person be hands-on as well as visionary?
Correct. They need, they need to be.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's good to hear. And then, I'm wondering, you know, I don't like to spend more money, but I'm wondering if that's a high enough salary to attract the talent that we need for a Director position?
I did check neighboring towns, and I got a little more and a little less, so I kind of put it in the middle. I mean, so, I didn't want to scare off putting too much on the line, but I did find that it was in the ballpark of what we should be looking for in the talent level.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get the talent that we're needing in that position.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and it's, well, I think I put this, I started talking about this even though the dates show, the printed dates, but we're talking in November. I think we're living in a different world from November as far as what is going on. So, it's, you're going to see the same with some things. Typically, when you submit something in November, December. So, there might be some salary run-ups since then, but tried to, I seriously checked with multiple towns, and as I said, that was right in the middle. And then, for some reason, it's, because this budget is, you know, doesn't kick in obviously to July 1st, and you find that there's a candidate that you have to pay a little more, you start him a little later, and you get the right person in, and then you, you're still keeping within the budget, and then you have to address it the next year. If you, if the town, but that's when the First Selectment has to make those important decisions of what they want to pay someone commensurate. But the 105 in November, December 2021 seemed to be in the ballpark. I'm not sure it is still, when there's 7% inflation.
Okay. And then, I don't know if I was just misunderstanding or mishearing. It sounded like you had said Carmen and another IT Person. That other IT Person would be the Director, not an additional hire beneath that Director?
Well, Carmen has been with the town, working in a lot of years, and she has the ability to put in for this job, but we are going to figure that out. So, so nothing has been predetermined of who the Director is, but there would be a Director, and then there would be an IT Specialist working with them. But that, we don't know exactly how that makeup of who that's going to be.
Oh, okay. And so-
That Director position would be the one that would be advertised.
Right. And so, that another IT is the current position that Carmen has?
Correct.
Not two people under the Director?
Well, the IT Database Supervisor is the position she currently has. We're proposing for a Director, and that's a position that will be, that will be advertised, and-
So, a Department of Two.
Right. Department of Two.
Right.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And is there a reason why that position had no increase in salary?
The reason of which position that-
The IT Database Supervisor?
Yeah. So, that's going to be, you're going to see this in an overarching theme of everything, is the unaffiliateds and all the unions are coming up due this year. So, when you don't have an agreement with anything yet, you put it in as flat, and Anna has a line for contract contingencies, which I'm sure is kind of a large number somewhere in the budget. So, that's why you're going to see that common theme in everything, is that all these lines are flat, and whatever is negotiated, or whatever is figured out of not only the IT Database Supervisor, Carmen's position is unaffiliated, like a bunch, a bunch of ones, but then the union, there's, I think UPU is due, Police is due. So, you're going to see that all throughout the budget presentations.
Oh, okay. And then, the last question I have is, you had mentioned that the schools were also on the IT Subcommittee or Committee.
Correct.
Do you plan for the future IT Director to work more closely with the schools, and that we can achieve some synergy between the two different entities?
I'd always say yes. They always should be dealing with. That's why I deal with not only Marianna as a Business Manager, but Jeff and Chris Lund. The thing, we're always talking to schools, so yes, they should. They're the ones that even said, it's so much different in trying to push IT out for the schools, the teachers, and the students. You have 3,000 kids that you're trying to have, as opposed to the Chief rolling in police cars with, you know, bandwidth, and I can't even imagine all the stuff going on in that room as far as all the stuff. It's totally different ballgames. But, security, anywhere we can, where we can talk to the school we do, to try to find synergies is the best word, so.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry if I went all too long.
Just one question. Where is our data center located? Is it in this building?
Yes. It's, it's, yeah, it's in this building. I don't want to have a bomb hit in somebody. I won't tell you exactly where they are. It's in this building.
We have a co-location in case it goes down for any reason, or if it goes down-
Everything is backed up nightly, and there's a whole, that's a big part of that job, is all the, all the recovery and all that kind of essential thing. So, she works with STAR Computer on that, but if you want more specifics, Carmen could certainly get into all the, how everything's backed up. But everything is, if anything went down, we had an issue about four years ago where we lost some servers, and we learned our lesson. And at that time, we made sure that everything was backed up and that servers, we started, that's when we started putting away money regularly in a CNRE to try to make sure that the servers don't go old and bad, so.
I'm good.
I just have a quick question. I don't know whether it's for the Chief or not, on the Everbridge system. Could you talk a little bit about what it's capable of, and, you know, are we, are there other functionalities that we should be thinking about?
Sure. Mike Finkelstein, Chief of Police, Emergency Management Director for the Town of Eastlime. So, thank you for having me here tonight. I get to see you again the end of the month, so hopefully that goes well also. Everbridge, Everbridge is originally the state system for emergency notification. It allows entities to reach people in the community. It allows the community to opt in. The state system that was in place that every town gets for free is only for emergencies. So, it has to be life-threatening type events, and that's when it's utilized. The Town of Eastlime and many other towns opted, and we just opted this past year, to go into a softer version, which allows our residents to have more functionality, more ability to opt in, gives different paths for you to sign up, and we pushed that out for an advertisement to people. It allows us to notify people of traffic, of events, of weather, also policing crime-type information, which, again, the state system is simply for life-threatening emergencies. So, it allows us that functionality. It also allows us internal functionality. So, it allows us to make staff notifications, and we're trying to work to configure that kind of as we speak. We've been working with the Department Heads and Town Hall to kind of get different groups together. So, Town Hall can send out messages. Different employee, employee departments can do that. We're also setting it up so that people such as Mr. Burgaw, or the Water Department, or Parks and Rec have groups set up so they can also send messages out to individuals in the community, should it be something that meets that importance. So, really comes down to where we build it, what we build it for, and what our intent is. And our intent is to have it be a robust notification system for our residents. But again, we're really, really pushing, and this is a great venue to start that, or to make sure, or continuing that, to get people to opt in. And what does that do? It allows, you know, you as, as an individual to say, "I want it to go to a text. I want it to go to an email. I want it to go to my home phone." And you have a progression for those, so people can get those notifications, so.
Since we're on air, do you want to tell people how they can sign up for that?
Certainly. Well, the best way to do that is to go to the Town of Eastlime website. There is a button on there. It's also on our social media for emergency management. So, there's several ways to get that done, and I encourage everyone to do that, because simply, if we can't find you with a notification, you don't, you're not aware of it. If you go with the state system, the state system only has the database with your home phone. It doesn't have, unless you have opted in on your own, it doesn't have your cellphone and other pass for, for contact. And we want to encourage people to give as many paths as possible.
And given our proximity to Millstone, where does that fall into?
Well, it's a huge piece of it. Now, again, the emergency notification system came free, and the state allowed that. And I'm glad you brought that up, because you'll also notice in, in your budget, and when we get to the end of the month, we'll talk about this more, but Everbridge this year is being paid for off of the grant from Millstone. So, each year, we put in for different items for nuclear safety. That was one of the things that was funded. However, it is in the budget this year, simply because we don't know, we don't find out what we're getting for funding until June. So, we have to kind of put it in the budget to say, if we don't get it, we need to continue to fund this, because we think it's a very viable and valuable program for $11,000, you know, a year in that maintenance phase. So, but again, I think it's a, you know, very crucial thing.
Thank you.
Any, while I'm up here, any other questions for, you know, police-related, emergency-management related? I know, you know, Joe did a great job, and he does a great job, but a lot of it unfortunately is driven by, you know, the changes that we've had in Emergency Services. And you all saw that when you had the tour of our new facility. The IT improvements are profound. Thirty-three years ago, I started as a police officer. We didn't have a single computer. We had typewriters. That was it. Now, there's not a single thing that we do that is not computer-driven. We had the body cameras, the in-car cameras, the networks and connectivity inside of our building, our dispatch center. Everything is IT-related. And that's great. It's great for efficiency, great for professionalism and modernization, but it also comes with a cost of, it constantly has to be maintained. And we're different than other agencies, and this is why it becomes important, and why the STAR contract has been so valuable. Saturday morning at 2:00 and 2:00 a.m., dispatch needs somebody who can respond if there's an IT failure. Town Hall is Monday through Friday during the day, and Carmen does an outstanding job of keeping that system up and running. We're 24/7/365, not just with the building, not just with dispatch, but the police officers in the field with their cars, their body cameras, in-car cameras, the in-car computers. There are also the networks, the firewalls, our phone system. So, I can go on and on with the list, and I think we've counted it up. There's probably about 40 different systems that we run right now that 30 years ago, we had zero. So, that change has been profound inside of Emergency Services. But also remember too, our systems also benefit the fire departments, the ambulances, other town agencies. Our dispatch center services them. Our CAD system and RMS record system services those agencies as well. So, while it falls under police, there's also, you know, a synergy with the other departments. And I think, you know, going back to one of the questions about the Board of Ed, we're always looking for those conversations as well. We share systems with them, be it camera systems, be it access control systems, and we're constantly having those conversations to how we improve, kind of working together with those things. So, I think those, that's important pieces, you know, to point out. But, you know, as Joe said, we're left languishing sometimes, because we're dividing our jobs, and really need to push this to IT personnel to get a lot of these projects done that we have working. So, thank you for your time. And get any questions at all for anything in my realm?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, next budget is number 113, Building Maintenance. Joe, go.
I do want to pass out one thing. When we get into the biggest-
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
When we get into the biggest line item issues in here, it's a staffing thing. So I thought I'd, I mean, I don't take that lightly. This is the matrix that I try to cover every hour of the day. So it's as best thought out as possible how we cover these buildings. But just, you know, as the chief was saying, you know, all the different things IT, but it's also a 30,000 square foot building that I know we're using 15 or actually probably 17 when you get done with the upstairs. But that's a huge addition of, it's not just a 17,000 square foot building. It's like, this is a perfect example, my building maintainer was called out sick today and my other maintainer's not there and the public works director's over there trying to make sure the toilets are unclogged. So that's, you're trying to balance things. So when we get into the specifics of the salary lines, that's a big part of it. So, starting off, the maintenance of town buildings line, 113, 311 custodians, if anything, I think it's not even going up significantly. But what I have in this matrix that I have for you is that what I'm proposing is an addition of 15 hours, which I think is pretty good because we actually have, we have two part-time employees that are 30 hours. So those are the best kind of people to bump up to 40 because you're already paying them benefits. So it's just 10 more hours instead of adding an employee because then you have the B word, the benefits. So by adding the five additional hours for the day person at the community center and 10 more hours of the person that's here, I can spread those, and those people aren't just like staying at these buildings. Then I can move people around more to help out because what we're finding is, again, we just started getting into the, into the public safety building, but there's locker rooms, there's people there 24/7 and dispatch, there's, I don't know, four sets, five sets of bathrooms. I mean, it's so much different than a building like this. So anyways, that's the biggest thing. So that's what comes up with the 247, 050 was the biggest increase there. Going through this, the next line item of note, service contracts, the biggest thing, and I broke down every single building. So the good thing is that any service contracts we had on the building on Main Street are, you know, were basically, that got deducted. The public, there were dispatches now, that got deducted out. But we're reapplying all the different service contracts over there. So there was an increase of, quick math, 4,600 there to cover those service contracts. Again, with building maintenance also, additional money. On line 295, for those that aren't aware or newer to knowing this line is, that's the line for fire protection. So that's the line that goes to the water department. That's the line that covers the fact that there's 900 fire hydrants in this town. And when the Midway Plaza was burning down, or anywhere else burns down, that's where the joy of the town to hook up to the town system and let it fly and all that water. So that's fire protection town. And a lot of towns, like in New London or in, well, it's a city, but other areas around, they charge, the utility charge is like maybe $100 a hydrant. It's even more than that. I think it's 100. So if you take the 800 hydrants times $100, it's $80,000. This line used to be $70,000 20 years ago. And for some reason, when the water department, and it was well before I was here, seemed to be flushing cash, they dropped it to 15,000. And so when I first got here, that line was at 15,000. While the water department's not flush with cash, it's the other hat I wear as far as running a water and sewer department completely separate from the town, is they've been bringing it back up to try to get back to the 70,000 level. So that's why, over the last eight years, we've been bumping that line up from 15,000, 10% a year. So that's why that's up 10%. There's a little more in telephones, the telephone line. And then the electricity is up a little bit. I did go, you know, again, we lose a little bit of electricity usage at the old, because that was electric heat at the old building. So I'll be happy that we get rid of that for electric. But then we have a bigger building and so that. So I'm pretty comfortable that 262 number for electricity, but we are adding that bigger building. And a bigger hit is the heating and oil. And you're gonna see that when you get to our highway line, is just fuel is going crazy. And even still with this, I'm hoping that we're okay because the numbers, I would have liked to have locked in some stuff even on the heating fuel three, four months ago. But we've had, we've been very fortunate to get very, very, very good pricing that we bid out on propane. So we're hoping to continue keeping that. So that line item for the heating and oil propane is showing up 17% of 15,000. So I believe I covered all the, so if you have any questions on this budget, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
I'll start this one. Lauren, do you have anything you wanna add right now?
I have a couple.
Joe, I have a couple.
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken, last year, we were talking about the new public safety building. I'm talking about the custodians now. It was my impression at the time when we closed down the old Flannan's Firehouse and knew, I mean, the old police station, that the amount of dollars for those two would be reduced when we got over to the public safety building. Was that a long?
You're talking like it's an offset? Like they would wash each other out?
Right. Not wash, but one way or the other. That's what I'm getting at.
So we were going up to the dispatch building three hours a week and we were going to the police station five hours a week, six hours a week. Now we have to have someone over there 40 hours a week. So it's not a wash. It's, that building is so much more than what these two buildings here. And plus, we never, well, just so everyone knows too, in the last, because I've been doing this for eight years now, like three, four years ago, building maintenance got cut, a position that we've never really made up. So we've been scrambling ever since. Like, this is a perfect example today. If anyone is out, we don't have enough to cover people. So it was never gonna be a wash. I never, I never said that it would be a wash. I gave all the numbers of what it was gonna be. But we're only adding 15 hours, which seems like a lot, but it's really not for covering, covering that new building to the level that we really need to cover it to.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say that. You said that it was gonna be a wash. It's just my impression going through the meeting that it might have been not an offset, but a reduction in hours. But now that I see that the square footage of the new building is much greater than the combination of the other two.
Oh, yes.
It's gonna come out.
And the important thing is that matrix, is it breaks down exactly. If anything, that's gonna be a struggle to keep up to, but our guys are gonna do the best they can, our staff. Because it's just, when you have a building that size, well, I was talking to the chief today. I mean, our custodian works 2:00 in the afternoon to 10:30. It's better to clean buildings at night, but if the toilets are clogged and something's going up, someone has to run over there. So it's a struggle. And that's why I bumped up hours on the day shift on the community center. So if I have an issue with the PD, I'm gonna have the community center person go over to the PD to cover it because that's what we have to do. So we're juggling a lot. I gave you guys the matrix. It's definitely not a wash and I appreciate it. I tried to put this as best together, but that building is so much more than what we had already, which is great for the officers. I mean, it's an adequate space. Before they were just jammed into that building. Now they're in an adequate space. But that adequate space is, is a lot of, it's all, it's all the floors, the VCT tiles. I mean, you just can't just leave all that stuff all, you have to keep after that stuff or else that building's gonna go downhill quickly. So it's our goal to keep that investment in the best condition possible, which is the hours that I'm proposing.
Okay. Another question was, you mentioned it briefly, front page, third page in, 300 operating expenses, the telephones 201. That went up quite a bit. It was like over 12%.
The telephone line, you're saying?
It's 300, 201 telephones.
Yep.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no, I see what you're talking about.
I think it was like $2,400. Where there's 12.31% went up.
Well, I break down exactly what, how that 21-9 comes up to. The town cellphone lines, so basically, all the cellphones except PD and fire marshal and water and sewer, doesn't, but are paid on this line. Equipment and the balance is the network.
Could it be that the increased amount of phones and the new?
I'm pretty sure, I haven't read it here, I'm pretty sure it's because the cost of the voice over internet went up significantly. That's what it is.
Okay. That's good.
Stoney, just looking at your matrix, you were the chief field, probably down the road, you're gonna need coverage on the weekends?
Um.
Just to wait and see.
I don't, honestly, I don't think we're gonna need coverage on the weekends. Down the road, I think there's gonna be a need to have someone there during the day. Because right now, we have, we're gonna have, need, and I'm not saying in this budget, but going forward, you're not gonna need another half person or something like that. Because during the day, they still have, to do that building right, you still could have someone doing certain areas during the day. But then, the other thing is, the interesting thing is, this is a custodian line. It's, there's a lot of building maintenance issues that aren't custodian. Like, I mean, I was there monitoring the CO system today, the carbon nonoxide system. There's a, you know, if any alarm goes off, it has to be reset. Who's watching? It's like fire, so there's, down the road, there could be a need for someone during the day. So if the chief or any of their staff needs something, I don't have to move someone from the community center. Because the other thing is, it would, I think it would help to have a gopher. The same person would also be able to run some of the vehicles over the highway to get maintenance and so on. Right now, you have police officers like moving, have to move vehicles and some, run some stuff. So that's my thought going down the road. But this budget is not proposing to have someone there during the day.
And then First Electman mentioned that we did, we were able to lock in a fuel contract.
That's good. That's the 317 budget. That's in the, that's, the road fuel is not under here. It's under the highway budget. But yeah, we were able to lock in, I had a Black Friday sale that I purchased.
So the heating oil and propane, we unlocked.
What's that?
The heating oil and propane on this.
Are not locked in?
Are not locked in.
They're not. Well, the vendor that we've been using have been giving very, very good pricing. But no one really can lock in right now any of the stuff. But.
That's something we've never looked at down the road.
And the fuel oil, we've been, we've been working with, with road fuel, there's no, there's no vendor in town that sells road fuel to that, to that buys 100,000 diesel. We already checked with guys. But guys' oil does provide fuel oil. And they also do all the maintenance on all our boilers for free. And they've been very good to town. So I've been working with them on the fuel, on the fuel oil purchase. But they haven't been buying it a year in advance.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter?
I'm good.
Just one question on the fire protection.
Yep.
That's a set charge, whether the water is used or not because of the number of hydrants? It's not a line where there could be some that's returned if water isn't used to a large extent?
Well, everyone benefits that's near a fire hydrant. And your insurance, your home insurance is helped because you have a fire hydrant. So they check out the areas and so that. Because if there's no hydrants, you're just relying on the pumper truck. So the fire hydrants aren't metered. We've actually had a lot more structured fires in town. So I don't know of any system that meters fire hydrants out. It's just a cost of providing, it's better for a community to have fire protection than not have it. And that's, that cost that the town is being charged is actually lower than a lot of what other utilities. We just happen to be lucky that our utility company is actually also us is, you know, their water, Eastlime Water Department. But as you're well aware, Eastlime Water Department is completely separate, does not ask the town for operating funds.
Right.
So, yeah, we, it's not, it's never really set up that you give money back. Because actually, it might work out that on these fires, the amount of water that goes, you know, that the last thing you're gonna be wanting to do is get a meter on it. See how much water.
Right, right.
You wanna throw as much water, like I was, as everyone, if anyone saw the Midway fire, it was scary. I mean, it's a whole town. You can see it from anywhere in this town, this 50-foot inferno. And as soon as the fire trucks started rolling on and firing that water, it's, you know, 500 gallons. I mean, just, that's what made a difference and why that whole building wasn't. And that could be your house, it could be my house, it could be anyone else's house. So it's not ever really set up the amount of water you use. It's for the ability to have that hydrant ready. So if a fire comes, you hook up to it and all the fire departments. So that's just a way it's set up. And I think it's been pretty fair. It's a pretty great benefit to the town to have that.
Right. No, I understand that. I was just wondering for determining the charge on that line item, is it based on the number of hydrants that we have in town?
Well, as I said, we have 850 hydrants. So if we did, so right now, private, if you have a private hydrant, say for example Costco or any of these others, Stop Chop, any of these other places that we have a number of fire hydrants, they get charged $250 a hydrant for the, for that ability to have that hydrant to flow.
Right.
If you did, the 57,000 divided by 850, the town's getting a bargain.
Yep.
And I hear about it from the board, the other board that I deal with, Water and Sewer Commission, that wants that number higher. But this person, the First Electman, is the chairman of that board, that has to actually hear from you guys. So it's a balancing act of what's a fair amount. So that's still way underpriced.
No, that sounds good. I just was seeking to understand how the charge was arrived at.
Correct.
It's a couple, one or two of the members of the Water and Sewer Commission mentioned after the fire at the old Holdridge, then the one up in the orchards and then down here, that, you know, they've used a lot more water than anticipated. So should the water and sewer give a surcharge, you know, an extra charge to the town? I don't want the fire departments and that to be worried about how much water they're using when they're putting out a fire. I mean, so I think this is, I don't think many people would argue about this. And Anna just did a calculation, we're up at 67 and change per fire, which is still lower than it was per fire hydrant going back about 15 years ago. So.
Right. That sounds good. Thanks.
Yep.
You're welcome.
I just have, again, one quick question. I know you had to work on this budget a few months ago. Now that the public safety building has been up and running a month, are you still feeling like this, like I'd rather you be comfortable than us coming back later in the year looking to tap into contingency?
I think it's a responsible budget. My best answer to you is still too early to tell what exactly. I mean, I've still talked to the chief and tried to find out how it's working and so that. I would almost rather, if we get into the fiscal year and it becomes an issue, then to, you know, to come back to these boards with, you know, with a contingency or something like that. But I think the way we have it set up, it is boosting some of the hours. And I think it's the right thing to do. We could always add more. I'd love to hear that. I just, I really try to put responsible buttons in that aren't, trying to add more to it. So my staff will probably be very upset that I said that.
So.
All right. Anyone, anything else? Okay, great. Thank you very much. And we are now moving on to public parks, 317.
So this, this is my biggest budget, but it's a pretty important thing. I mean, we have 114 miles of road in town. And I drive them as well as you all drive them every day. And I think we should be really proud. We have a fantastic staff. Between plowing and all the maintenance and all the engine, I mean, one of the lines that we, just so you know, one of the lines that we've not talked about tonight is engineering. And my town engineer, Alex Close, is right here. Extremely fortunate to have him. But the important thing to know is that engineering staff is the one that puts together all the road jobs. And they're my lifeblood to try to do all this work so that we can, you know, have good roads. So I have the best roads around. So, but on the highway side. So, on the current year budget, I was gonna break down the line items and the differences. And hopefully I answer your questions before you even get to ask them for me. But if I don't, then certainly please ask me after. The first line, 211, is, I mentioned before, The first line, two eleven, um, is, is, I, I mentioned before, um, that it, well, it says director, public works director, um, the deputy public works director, which is Bill over here, and highway superintendent. A portion of my salary and a portion of the directors goes to utility, cause we spend a lot of our time to utility. The reason this number seems ballooning, like no one's getting a sixty one percent raise or increase. If, if people recall, there was a gentleman, Chuck Holyfield, that worked for the town, like twenty years, for twenty years, he retired five years ago, I believe, now. At the time, Chuck was the highway supervisor, Chuck Holyfield was the highway supervisor, and he managed all the highway department. At the time, I changed the model to have the person running the highway department was the general foreman within the union, which would have been, which would have been paid on line three eleven. So during this past fiscal year, um, I promoted, um, the, the general foreman to highway superintendent, Justin Porter, he's fantastic, he does a great job down there. So he's actually now the highway superintendent, just like we had with Chuck. So that's why this line, so there's a flip-flop, so line two eleven went up a lot, line three eleven went down. It would have been nice if it's commensurate, but it doesn't, I mean, it's apples and oranges as far as the line three eleven's a lot smaller. But that's what was basically happening, is that, um, we're switching the gen, the, the head person, the highway department is now a non-union position, who's a salary position. So that's what that flip-flop, um, hope I explained that best. This, the, uh, the two twelve is, um, just so you're aware, also, a few years ago, the tree warden in town was Bill, um, was Bill Jezerski, and he passed away. And at the time, you had to be a licensed, you had to either pass the state, um, license, uh, testing to be a, um, tree warden, or you had to be a licensed arborist. And I, I had the licensing to do that, so I was appointed to be the tree warden. So in the last term, they put this stipend, so the stipend was going to the public works director. What I'm proposing here is not making any more money, is to put the stipend into the salary, because thirty percent of my salary goes to highway, so it actually saves the town money, um, doing it that way. It just makes more sense, most towns, that responsibility is, it's, it could be written into the job description, that it is the responsibility here, and it will be taken care of. It is best to have a staff person as the tree warden, because the tree warden is really responsible for all the trees in town, and it doesn't matter what the budget is, you're responsible for them. So, um, I also have the line item that I manage that, so that line item doesn't go over, and I work with EverSource. This past year, I think EverSource probably cut down forty thousand dollars with the trees for us. That's just constantly working EverSource to cut down the trees. I mean, it's being paid out of someone's dollar, but it's electric rates instead of taxpayer money, which is, I think, a benefit. So, um, that's why that line is showing zero, cause that just flip flops. The overtime, oh, so the storm overtime line. Yeah, sure.
Did six thousand from two twelve went into two eleven?
Correct.
Okay.
And then thirty percent of that went over to, uh, it gets paid by the, the utilities, cause the utilities pay for thirty percent of the director's salary.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, don't, right, please do. Uh, the storm overtime, the reason the storm overtime went down is not that the storms are going down, actually, they're going up, is that the, uh, general foreman's position that was in last, that was in this current year's budget, was a union position that was, gotten paid overtime. So now that person's a salary position, so that's why that went down. Items of note, everything is, uh, going up, traffic signs and street signs, the cost of materials are going up, that's why that, uh, line two hundred, two twenty-three is going up. Recycling, miscellaneous disposal as well, that, all the tra, the traveling costs and, um, the hauling costs, groundwater monitoring, so that's line two ten, two twenty-three, groundwater monitoring. So, believe it or not, the landfill was closed about thirty years ago, so we should be able to get a get out of jail free, um, sampling. Like, um, in the past years, every year, it's been, um, about fifteen thousand dollars to do the sampling, cause it's very stringent DEP mandated sampling. The problem is, the DEP doesn't let you out just when you hit thirty, you have to do all these reports to let them out. So I, I put it in the notes, that requires, the company that's been working, that's actually did the closure for us, and has been doing sampling for the last thirty years, is, there's a proposal I had, um, to actually give us all the reporting. But it's not just reporting, they have to do all these extra testing and stuff like that to then present to the DEP. So hopefully, if we can do this amount, then we can, in future years, be out of this sixteen thousand dollar burden of, of sampling.
Do we test for PFAS?
Not yet, uh, but there's all kinds of, uh, that's, that's becoming a bigger issue. But in Ken, I was, I was just at a water conference the other day, and they start talking about, and Connecticut hasn't been doing a lot of testing, but if they start, that's kinda scary.
Cause I know that a landfill in Hartford has a problem with PFAS.
Yeah, they might, they might have specific things, but they haven't been requiring it. But, um, hopefully, we can get out of sampling at some point of, of, of the, and I would say, hopefully, of just, we should be able to, cause we've done our due diligence for thirty years of doing sampling there, um, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that maybe we should test for it before getting out of, cause if we have a problem with that, I think we'd rather wanna know, because it is.
Well, that's part of that report.
Yeah.
The, whatever Fosun O'Neill does, the report is gonna tell us what we have, it's gonna recommend how we proceed forward, so.
Okay.
So now, we get into, um, so that's the groundwater monitoring. SCAR tipping fee, my, my point is that is, uh, for anyone SCAR, Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority, um, they're fantastic. It's, it's a, it's a huge win for the town to be part of this group. We've been paying fifty eight dollars a ton, they subsidize our, our, our tipping fee. The average rate in the, it's around the state's like a hundred, we pay fifty eight, they're bumping it up to fifty nine this year. So, a hundred dollars, I'm, I'm the vice president on, on SCAR, so I fought to keep it down, cause they were trying to bump up the rate. So, uh, that line, and you'll hear me next year, but that line's gonna start creeping up, cause inflation is starting to creep up on, on SCAR, so, um, that's going up. Bulky waste, uh, transportation and tipping. The best thing I could say to you is, even though it's going up forty one percent, look at the actual from this, uh, from, from the year closing out last year, even though I budgeted a hundred and five, it came in at one thirty-two. That, that's, what that is, is that everyone loves our transfer station, they just keep bringing bulky waste there, the more broky waste, the more revenue I get, but the more expense it is, but you don't always, the, the revenue shows up on the backside, but the expense shows up on the front side. So it's costing me more, so you'll see that on my revenue side, the revenues are going up, and we're trying to keep up, the revenue's commensurate with what it's costing us. Because they keep, I mean, every four or six months, they keep raising our, our hauling costs, our tip fee up at Willimantic Waste. So I keep raising the fees up there, so that we cover that cost, so that it kind of is an offsetting, cause that's kind of a user-based thing, and someone wants to use a transportation, they should pay commensurate. So that's, uh, bulky waste. Fleet maintenance, I mean, it just, it, this is a line scary, because it just, the cost of getting stuff now is just crazy, and then you just, the car, the trucks sit there for a month for a part. But I had to increase that line item. Storm materials, I wrote it up there, um, they kinda caught up on me last year, uh, they are, this present year, salt went up eighteen percent this winter. And, um, so I'm projecting it's gonna even go up more, so that's why that line item jumped up big time, is to try to, try to keep up with the rising cost of salt. The biggest hit is the fleet fuel, and someone, I think Paul mentioned before, I did, um, uh, for good news, we're paying a dollar fifty-one right now for gas, and about a dollar fifty-eight for diesel, or vice versa. So it's the best rate in the state of Connecticut, but that, that is ending soon, so, um, I bought seventy-five percent of the town's fuel on Black Friday, just because I heard that the fuel went down, so I came in and it was down thirty cents that day. So we got a good rate for most of the fuel, but still, a good rate is still up forty-seven percent. So, I mean, the going rate now is four, four dollars, or four twenty, so, um, that's a, that's a big nut to go up, so. That's pretty much, um, you know, the last thing I said about revenue was, the revenue, landfill deposits are going up twenty-five percent, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's pretty much attributable to bulky waste.
Can you talk about the streetlights, four hundred utilities?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I mean, that's not good for this year, but.
Yeah, so, so the streetlight line, um, I pitched six years ago to change, to buy the town's streetlights, and change them over to LED, and we did a seven-year play, payback. This is the seventh year, we've been paying, so instead of seven, six years ago, we were paying about the same amount, two oh five. And we've been paying the same amount every year, but in every year, we have a hundred forty-five thousand dollar payment, that's, this is the last year. So next year, we should be saving, that line should drop by a hundred forty-five thousand, and everyone seemed to love the lights, they, um, I know the lights going out. I say everyone but Paul, because I've been, and I have, so with the streetlights, we own the lights, we maintain the lights, but if the light does not have power, in, in Paul's case, um, then, and if it's a ground fault, then I have to reach out to EverSource. But this has been a great program, because instead of costing two hundred ten thousand dollars, it's gonna cost us forty-five thousand, uh, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. So I think that's what you're talking about. Do you have any questions?
I just have one. Thanks, Joe, that, that was very informative.
Yep.
On the two hundred services, two twenty-five, the traffic calming measures, it, how many devices do we have? Those are the things that tell you how fast you're driving, right?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they cost forty, forty-three hundred dollars each. We have four, um, that, um, Yukon, um, the Technology Transfer Center up at Yukon gave us two, so we have six. I have so many requests, and we work with the chief, uh, the chief was here, but, um, the, the nice process now, if someone complains about speeding on the road, we put up a sign, and then we get those signs, those are smart signs, they have a computer in them. So it tells all the, um, uh, the amount of, uh, traffic, it tells how fast they're going, how slow they're going, it gives all the data, so when someone says, you know, people are going eighty miles on a road, well, we download the data, and well, yep, well, they are, they aren't. And it tells you like there's, so, we've been trying to get a sign a year, um, and also, if there's any kind of pavement markings or any other things we can do, cause it's the biggest complaint that gets the police, is, is, is speed. And why not have a line for traffic calming to try to help the police in, um, trying to do some measures that, uh, can slow people down?
Right, so that, that, that line item then is to get one more additional.
We've been getting one every year, and then a little bit of buffer for any other, whether we have to have, I was looking to do over on, um, Grand Street and, uh, Smith, the road, the pavement's like sixty feet wide. I was looking to do some line striping on the edging, so that it kinda makes people feel a little tighter, but that costs money. But if you're driving down there, you don't feel like it's a drag stretch, you have to like stay within the lines. So th- those are kind of, that's, that's a perfect traffic calming measure that you can do, that's not speed bumps or something like that that become problematic.
Okay, so it incorporates more than just the?
Yeah, that's the extra amount.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I'm just thinking, that seems to be a very effective way to, to deal with traffic safety issues, and perhaps, maybe we could look at even getting more than just one a year.
That, people like them, and they do slow people down, um, we get some good data on them, the problem is like, like one of them might keep right on Society Road by, right by the school, so it doesn't move. And it just seems like, you know, it's just an overkill to be there, but everyone that drives there, you'd watch them, they slow down as soon as they see it, and it's a shame factor, cause I do it, it was like you drive along, all of a sudden, someone in the car, you're going forty-seven. So, you know, most people slow down, there's a few people that don't, that's why it turns off, the people that try to get the high score, it, the, the, the thing shuts off after fifteen.
Thanks.
Yep.
Joe, just not so much a line item, but can, can you just, um, give an overview maybe of what the town has spent trying to comply with the unfunded state mandate around the MS four?
That's a good question, um, well, cause one of the things, we have a stormwater compliance line here, then we also have on the engineer's line, it's.
Did we have to purchase any, you know, capital outlets for equipment, training?
I don't even wanna underestimate, twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty? MS four compliance?
Compliance?
Yeah.
Well, we have the.
All the sampling.
Twenty thousand, I'm sure wet sampling, and then the rest is gonna be Peter and I's time. So we're fortunate, um, I know, I'm sorry, I'm not at the mic, but just quickly.
Oh, yeah, please.
Oh, we're mobile, so for the record, Alex Close, the town engineer. So we're fortunate that although we are bringing on a consultant to help us get caught up, as you may know, the permit renews this year. So we're looking at, uh, split between money we have left over from this year, and then this is gonna continue throughout the summer into the next fiscal year. It's gonna cost us about twenty thousand with a consultant to get caught up with the rest of our wet sampling, cause we simply don't have the manpower to do that. But most of our MS four is funded, um, in-house with myself and our civil engineer, Peter, um, doing a, a lot of the legwork. And then, um, on top of that, we have, we work with like the Eastern Conservation District, we're putting in three or four new tree filters this spring. We've got the rain garden program around town, so we're doing a lot through grants. To answer your question, um, we're not sure what's gonna happen with the new permit. So while you're correct, at this point, it is an unfunded mandate, we've been able to keep up with that, generally through grant programs, conservation partnerships. And then we're fortunate to have people like myself and Peter that are on staff. Some towns don't have that kind of staffing, and have to have consultants perform the entire function. So while it does take time, um, in order for me to do that, it's just an additional duty, like anything else, that, you know, I dedicate my time to. So to answer your question, right now, it's just getting caught up with the testing that we're spending extra money on. We are, um, we are greater than the, than the minimum disconnect currently, um, stormwater disconnect, so we're good there for now. We'll really have to wait and see what the new permit looks like, fully digest that and, and see what that looks like. But that wouldn't affect this upcoming fiscal year budget, that would be the next year, or possibly even the following year after that, where we'd have to revisit that based on the new permit, cause we just don't know what that looks like yet. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Forty-year-olds or twenty-five-year-olds, so I think we, we're very similar in our pro, I shouldn't say very similar, but we, we have similar programs, but with just with the eye of who, who is the audience that we're trying to attract. Uh, a few years ago, both of our departments started our, our special revenue funds, and, and the senior center has also done that. So you, you don't really see a lot of money for programs, because that's going into the special revenue fund, and it's sort of like what Joe mentioned about the user fee. If you take a Zumba class, it costs you forty dollars, and we try to price that, so that we figure if there's gonna be thirty people in the class, the instructor costs me this, I might have to get some of these supplies, so it's gonna cost me whatever, and I divide it by forty or twenty-five people, and they come out with a price. So, um, I circled my way around, and I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
I'm just, you know, thinking, you know, are there things, are there efficiencies that we're getting if we're offering similar things, that's all. So making sure that we're looking at ways that we can be cost-effective if.
Well, some of the things that we offer, Park and Rec doesn't at all, transportation, you know, um, the social service piece, the programming, maybe, um, but I, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, I think you would still need the number of staff that you have at the senior center, and the number of staff that you have at the Park and Rec department, um, because of the different things that they do and the different things that we do. Because the programs that we do, even though they may be similar, that, that's just a small piece of what each of our departments do. While it's, there's a common core to it, there's other spokes, so, okay.
One last question.
Sure.
Um, so you, you just mentioned about fees, and I'm wondering, for people who are not able to afford that, are there subsidies or sliding scales?
So, I mean, we don't officially put that out there, Rich, but having, having been in the position for a long time, that people know who I am, uh, that I, I have, I have in the past, people have come up to us to say, can I, but I can't. You know, I, can I do this, but I can't pay this, and, you know, you know, we're, we're gonna work with that. That's why we're never really looking to have, to make a huge surplus in our programs, but you wanna have enough little give in there, so that if somebody can't afford it, or can only pay fifty percent of the cost, then you're able to still offer it to them. Or if you got a program that, you know, is, is, it's, it has a really good audience, but that audience is maybe only fifteen people, but that class really needs twenty-five to break even. But now my Zumba class, which has forty people in it, you know, whatever extra in there can cover that, so yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you, that, that's what I was hoping, and, you know, it, it's great that it's, it's not advertised, but I, I, you know, I just, when you mentioned the, during the pandemic, people. advertised, but I, I, you know, I just, when you mentioned the, during the pandemic, people suffered from the lack of interpersonal relationships and socialization, that I didn't want the fees to be a barrier for people to get into activities.
And I will tell you something else, when, any of the programs that we offered during the pandemic, we didn't charge for anything. So, so if we had a class, so you could do an in-person class, but it was outside at, at Bribrook or McCook's, we didn't charge. You know, we just, at that point, it was just to try to get people to just hang on to be able to get through it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice meeting the folks that I just met tonight.
Next on the agenda is the Eastlime Library, across Center 420.
You called Lisa, but I'm a surprise guest. I'm going to say a few words.
David Jacobs.
Okay. My name is, my name is David Jacobs. I'm the president of the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just got a text that saying that there's no volume on the TV at all. I don't know whether, like people watching this on TV, and I'm just worried that if we have.
Yeah.
For the transcript.
I mean, the mics are, Dale, I got.
I got a same text. Says pixelating almost constantly and sound breaking up just as often.
So where's our IT people?
I'm working. Outside my pay grade.
It's normally the system.
I mean, they're all, all mic.
We should make them, not ask them.
You're asking for more IT money? Is that what?
I'm a CPA, I appreciate it, that's about it.
You've got all the mics up.
Yeah, we're all up.
They're all up.
Outbookers, they're not.
It's recording. What's that on call?
Recording, this is, I had to put it back up, so I don't know what's up.
You guys start to produce since on call?
No, my, my son just texted me to pick up.
So I, I, I think that in regard to minutes, we'd be able to come up with a.
Yeah, I mean, this is deliberation, so I think we'll be able to take care of that.
All right, sorry for the interruption.
Technical difficulties. I know you were expecting Lisa, so who am I? I'm not Lisa. My name is David Jacobs. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of the library. And before Lisa gets up to the podium here, I wanted to say just a couple of words, sort of as a preface, a preface to our budget presentation. Although this isn't what I was planning to say, but I really have to tell you a quick story. When I was listening before to Kathy's presentation on the senior center and there was a question about computer literacy and how many of our seniors are computer literate, I have to tell you that I faced the opposite problem. I teach at Yukon and at University of Hartford. And one of the funniest things that I've noticed teaching at these two universities is that when you get senior faculty, people, you know, my age, your age, some of you, and they run into an IT problem, you know what they do? They go into the hallway and they find the first 18-year-old freshman and say, hey, could you help me out? I can't figure out how you do it. And sure enough, they can fix it like that. So we face the opposite problem of the senior center, and I really got a kick out of her comment about that. Anyway, I, I just want to say a couple of introductory words about the library and I apologize to Kevin, he's heard this before when I spoke to the Board of Selectmen several weeks ago. A couple of things. First of all, I just wanted to make, I, I know, obviously I know Richard and I know Peter very well, the rest of you on the Board of Finance, I really don't know that well, if at all. But I just want to give you very, very quick background on the status of our library from a budget standpoint. I'm speaking in generalities now. Roughly half the libraries in the state of Connecticut are public agencies as, that is, they are agencies of the municipality. In other words, they are another body of the municipal government, just like Public Works or Parks and Rec or Board of Education, they're just another agency within the town. That's roughly 50%. The other roughly 50%, which includes the town of Eastlime, the library is not legally, financially, or technically part of the town government. We in Eastlime have a library that is an independent organization, we're the Eastlime Public Library Incorporated. We're a C3, was it C?
501C.
I'm not an accountant. 501C3 nonprofit organization. That said, we receive 90, don't quote me on the figure, roughly 94, 95% of our budget from town appropriation. And I'm just making that distinction so it's clear how our, our library functions compared to other libraries and other, the other 168 municipalities in, in the state. Second thing I want to mention is this, not directly related to our budget, but as some of you may know, I know Kevin knows, I was on the Board of Finance myself for eight years. In fact, for two years I was chairman of this board. The reason I'm pointing that out is I understand and appreciate more than most people who come before you with their budget, what you people go through in making decisions about how much to spend, on what part of the budget, the hours that you put in, the criticisms that you get. I remember when I was on the board, everybody had a criticism. Either you're spending too much on this or you're not spending enough on that, or why didn't you fund this more, or why are you spending so much on that? So I've been there, done that. And I mention this because I just want to tell you that I personally appreciate what all six of you are doing and thank you for your, for your time. Like I say, been there, done that, so I can really appreciate what, what you folks are going through right now. Say, been there, done that. Lastly, I want to mention that over the last many years that I've been president of the Board of Trustees, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have been extremely generous to the library, understanding of our needs, understanding the place that the library has in the functioning of this town and how we serve virtually every single demographic of the town, from little kids, I mean, really little kids, up to our most senior citizens, our students, our working families, everybody uses the library for one function or another. And I think we've seen the support of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance over all these years that I've been involved in the library, which is many, many years. And I just wanted to thank you for that, for understanding the role that the library pays, plays in our, in our town. So thank you for that also. With that and the details of the budget, I'll give you our executive director. This is Lisa, not me.
Thank you, Dave.
And I do mean that, thank you, Dave. Dave has been associated with the library for more than 30 years in the town with public service. Every library in every town should have one.
I got a text from Carmen Ames.
Oh.
She said, volume is good over the internet on YouTube, so we do broadcast on that, so the YouTube at least that video and volume is good according to Carmen, so.
Okay, so we're all set? And I'll speak loud since my voice doesn't usually carry very well. Hello, my name's Lisa Timothy. I'm the director of the Eastlime Public Library. I will have been director for 10 years as of this July 1st. Before that, I was associate, assistant director for nine years. So I've been associated with the library for 19 years at this point. Some of you are new, actually three of you, so hello. The library at this point is getting back to normal. We're slowly coming back to where we were before. We are still finding this strange phenomenon where our door counts are down, but our circulation is 100% of what it was before the pandemic. Our eBooks and what had, eBooks and electronic resources have skyrocketed during the pandemic and those are above what they were. Our door counts are still 50 or 60% of what they were before the pandemic. And at first I thought, you know, we're counting this wrong, what's going on? But actually, most public libraries in the state of Connecticut are finding that. For whatever reason, people are coming in, but they're taking out twice as much stuff when they come in and not coming in as often. That being said, the numbers are creeping back up month by month as we, we get out of the pandemic. Our hours, we are back to our full weekend hours and we are restoring our evening hours next month. We were open until seven, we're open until seven now, we used to be open until nine, we're going to be open until eight, starting in April. We don't know if we'll go back to the nine or not. That eight to nine hour was never really well-used and we're, we're sort of just taking that slow. Our book discussion groups are in person this spring. We're going back to full in-person programming this summer. We will have one or two Zoom meetings just because that it's occasionally allowed us to bring in speakers from far away that we normally couldn't. It was kind of a benefit of the pandemic as we learned to do programming and get people in from, from further away. That being said, our, our budget is flat, it's actually slightly less than flat. For the second year in a row, we're asking for less money. In the 20 years I've been associated with the library, that hasn't usually been the case. Our pension and health insurance costs have come down enough in the past year that it is offsetting any increases that we have. So we're asking for $4,000 less than, than we did for last year. And last year, we asked for $20,000 less. Because we don't have the evening hours as much, we don't have as much staffing, we lost five part-time staff members during the pandemic, four of them just didn't want to work with the public, one passed away. We've hired two back, so we, we have saved a little bit in, in staffing and because of the low door counts, we've been able to, to do that. If we start getting an increase, again, we may have to, you know, buff back up, but at the moment, we're, we're okay. As Kathy Wilson said, we are out of space in the community center. We've been out of space at the library since 2005. We had a professional building assessment done and it was, we were out of space then. We are looking at the feasibility study because we are looking at every little corner of the building and thinking, can we put a wall here? Can we put anything here that will, you know, give us a little more space right now? Any additional programming that we want to do, like a maker space or a computer lab would require a reconfiguration of the building at the very least, if not a, a small expansion. So we're kind of in a waiting pattern right here at the library, is the best way of saying it. We're, we're coming in with a flat budget, we're, we're coming back to the services that we had before the pandemic, but we have a, a real need to move in a different direction in terms of what services we provide and, and how we do that. So we're spending the next few years planning and talking. I think that covers, yeah, I guess that's most of what I want to say right now. I'll open it to questions.
Maybe you could explain, especially for the new board members, how the annual fund drive and the private foundation kick into the library.
Yes, we have, we're a more complicated budget than most town departments that come before you in that we get most of our money from the town, subsidy from the town, but we do also have a annual fund drive. We raise our own money and we usually get somewhere between 35 and 38,000. We got 39,000 during the pandemic, that was our record year. We also have a foundation, most public libraries have a friends of the public library, we have a foundation that has taken donations that the libraries had, probably donations that date back to the 1930s, but the foundation was founded in the 1990s to oversee an endowment that did cross the million-dollar line during the pandemic. And we do get a small subsidy from them every year that ranges anywhere from 25,000 to about 40,000. We've been averaging 45,000 the past two years because the stock market's gone up. If the stock, stock market crashes and the economy goes down, it'll be less. We've often used that money for some of the book budget. Given that we would like to expand in the next few years, the foundation has started telling me they'd like to start using that money to make plans to build a maker space or, or get equipment or whatnot. And so that, that foundation is undergoing a transformation at, at this time too. But we do have two smaller private streams of money and we actually have a third foundation at the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut, and we get about $10,000 a year from, from that endowment. So we have several smaller streams of money. The last page of the budget that I submitted, which looks a little different than the other towns, because of that, breaks down how those private fundings get used in our budget each year. In the past, there's been questions about what does the foundation pay for, what does the annual fund drive pay for? That page is there to break down for you how those funds are currently used.
So if the endowment ends up losing money that year, do they guarantee you, you know, do they?
Yes, there are 501C3 non-operating, something else. We, we spent the past year researching this and I can't remember exactly. They, by law, they have to disperse 5% of the corpus to us. So if, if the money shrinks, then the 5% is less, you know? And the bylaws, they were discussing whether or not they might want to hold that back if the, you know, the stock market were to tank or something. I don't think that'll happen, we're all hoping against that, but.
As far as share.
Yeah. It's been fine in the past, so, and we, but they've been cooperative with us in, in that matter.
Then I just had a question on a program and, and, you know, kind of would bring in Kathy too. Do you offer delivering library books to people who?
Yes, we have a homebound delivery service that was started probably about five or six years ago. And before the pandemic, it was restricted to households that did not have someone who could come to the library to get books or other items, videos, whatever. During the pandemic, we opened it to anyone who didn't feel safe to come to the library. We run that mostly with volunteers. We have one staff member who, who organizes that and the rest of it is volunteers who, who bring the books and select the books and, and pack them up. We also did curbside delivery during the pandemic. When we had to close the doors, we brought books out and left them on the bench with the, you know, bags and whatnot and, and it worked fine. We did quite a lot of business. We still offer that, but it hasn't been used as much the past few weeks. It's, you know, once or twice a week now, we get someone who might want us to bring something out for whatever reason. So we do have delivery and we have started helping with some of the electronics. We had someone go visit someone to help them with the computer stuff that Kathy was talking about. And we do a lot of that in the library, people come to us and, and we do that as well. I'm kind of glad Dave spoke earlier because the library is one of the biggest budgets that you have. We're the third or fourth biggest budget in town. And we're actually probably the steepest learning curve when you're new to a board like this because people, you know, they think, oh, I go to the library and you, you take out a book or something. And we're so much more than that. We are open seven days a week. There's a few Sundays in the summer that we close, but other than that, we're open 365 days a year, other than those few Sundays. And we're open three evenings a week. So we have a, you know, a staff, a good-sized staff and a lot of hours to cover and people do use us, so. There must be more questions? Yes, no?
Do you have any equipment for the sight impaired?
We have magnifying, special magnifying glasses that we have one patron who uses with the computers. We help, a lot of the, we used to carry a lot of the large print books, but with the eBooks, we're finding a lot, it's a lot easier. Most people who have sight impairment now want to use the eBooks because you can blow up the font size. Before the pandemic, we had a special needs reading group where people who were developmentally disabled would come in, they would read a paragraph and we had special Kindles for them with things that they could hold and they could, you know, be part of a reading group and, and read with other people. So we have some equipment like that. That's more on a case-by-case basis. If someone comes in and says, you know, I need something. We have a visually impaired person in our book group we have for 15 years, she's legally blind and we always go out of our way to figure out a way to get her, the book on tape or something, so.
And I think I understand that the eBooks are not something that the American Rescue Plan.
No, we weren't allowed to spend, we, we did get funding from the American Rescue Plan, we weren't allowed to spend it on eBooks, which was very frustrating to me because I, don't quote me on this, but I think other states were allowed to and the state of Connecticut lib, the state library at Connecticut decided not to allow that. And I'm not sure on that. The Lyon Consortium that we belong to is having the state librarian visit at our meeting next month. And so that was one of the questions I wanted to ask on why that money wasn't used. We did, we were able to use the money to get air filters, we did some renovations in the children's room. You know, we received $18,000 outside of the town through the Institute for, IMLS, Institute for Museum Library Services, the federal, they go through the state library and to us, so our funding came a little bit different, differently. We were very restricted in how we could use that, but we did pull it, we got a grant for $18,000. it. We got a grant for $18,000 for that. And we've actually gotten $32,000 worth of grants this year for different projects and whatnot. It's the most we've gotten in one year. We hired a part-time grant writer with some of the part-time money that we weren't using to open on Sundays last year. We used that to hire a grant writer who's been helping us, and that's paid off nicely.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last item under new business is the Parks and Recreation. So Mr. Putnam?
My name is Dave Putnam. I'm the Parks and Recreation and New Services Director. And I just want to introduce Tom Beebe. Our Parks and Rec Chairman is here, and Jackie Currie, one of our commissioners, is here as well. So I appreciate them coming out and supporting me in our budget review here today. Just real quickly, you know, we are, like I said, Parks and Rec and New Services, so that is reflective in the budget. As far as Parkside, we, you know, we have the three beaches. We have the three athletic complexes that we're responsible for maintaining. We are new service programming with our Open Center program and other types of programming, and then our basic recreational programming that we do mostly out of the community center and use of some of the schools. So just a brief background, I know you guys have been here for a couple hours, so I'll try to be brief. My recommended increase is 1.82%. So I think it's a very reasonable budget. If you want, we can go through the operating lines if you have certain questions, or I can point certain things out. I guess the first thing would be the director's line, and that shows a pretty good reduction in that, in that I will be retiring as of September of this year. So that will be a savings reduction coming in for a entry-level person at the director's position. So that's why you see a pretty good decrease. And that did anticipate in talking with Kevin, doing a one-week overlap, whoever that new director would be coming in, so that there is some continuity moving forward. So that is included in this budget. Longevity decrease, a big percentage there is because my longevity comes out of that. So that would be undone. The 10.7% for the maintenance payroll account is we hired a fourth full-time maintainer going back to where we were five years ago. That person, we funded half of this year, and so that is picked up full-time in this next budget moving forward. So that is why that is there. And then increase in longevity shows 11%, but it's really $100, because you go from 900 to 1,000 there. And one of our employees is getting to the 10th year anniversary. Other than that, like I said, we are pretty flat. The 6% increases in some of the line items there with our equipment maintenance, park and field is based on 6% inflation number on materials and supplies and that kind of thing. So like I said, a pretty modest, I think is a very reasonable 1.8% increase in our operating budget. So I'll open it up for questions. Anything I can help you with. I wanted to make sure that I was brief here, so.
This is Dave's last time he has to come before the Board of Finance for a yearly budget. Dave is going to be retiring in September 9th, as he just mentioned. So so much of what we take for granted in this town on the beaches and parks, which are always very good, are now outstanding. A lot of that has to do with Dave and all his efforts over the last decade and a half plus.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. That means a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, you know, we enjoyed talking to you today. You were sneaking out, going over to the park for lunch.
I just drove to Mac Cook and sat there and had lunch.
Yeah, we are very fortunate in our facilities here in town.
With that, and, you know, just with the construction of the boardwalk and what that has meant to not only the community as far as an economic driver, but also to our, the resources that we have here in our community are unbelievable. If you think, we go from Mac Cook, where closest to Crescent, all the way to the Amtrak Bridge, right? We have 1.5 miles of continuous shoreline. I don't think there's another community that has that, that has that ownership or that kind of management thing with three beaches right there that are within, you know, proximity of each other. It's really, it's a jewel. Nothing that I had to do with it. It's just, you know, the foresight of the Mac Cook family and the town to purchase that property and then, you know, to move forward with the boardwalk and the Eastlime Public Trust Foundation, all the partnerships and stuff that went into that is just, you know, has made Niantic really a, you know, a destination. Eastlime and Niantic really has become a destination area. And then that's been a good problem to manage, right? And so, you know, people are coming, so what do we, we got to, we got to deal with parking issues. And then we got to deal with, you know, the strain on our facilities and our bathroom facilities. I think we need to address that, and we can address that in the capital improvement plan. But I can't keep up with the demands on our restroom facilities at both ends of the boardwalk. It's just getting to the point where it's just, you know, when we built the hole-in-the-wall facility 11 years ago, it's hard to believe that building's been there for 11 years now. The, you know, I don't think we envisioned that we would need, and I'm going to say, more stalls and more things, but we cannot keep up with that demand. And that's a good problem, right? But how do we address that as a community moving forward? And I think that's something you, you know, this, this board and the Board of Selectmen, the Park and Rec Commission is going to really have to look at down the road. How do we address that and manage that? I think we're keeping up right now, but I can see that, that the strain on our buildings is really starting to show, and we're going to have to look at that down the road, so.
Well, thank you very much.
You're going to make that this easy for me, my last one?
You deserve it.
Well, thank you. All right.
And we appreciate the 1.82%.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Have a good evening.
Next item, public discussion.
I think the public is leaving.
The public is left. Good. Then I just open it up to the board for any of their comments, if there are any.
No surprises. I mean, you know, pretty straightforward. And I think it's going to be easier because it's a little more predictable about what's going to happen in the next year. I remember last year, there was a lot of unknowns and trying to budget for what we didn't know. And I think so far, what we've heard is pretty predictable. You know, I know we got some challenges coming up, upcoming updates, but I think tonight will be easy.
Yeah, I would just say that I think all of the staff did a great job on their presentations. You know, very easy to read. I like the comments at the end where they really point out in our, in our books, you know, the drivers of their budget. Makes it easy for us to pick things out, so.
Well, the nice thing is, is our department has, you know, they're so invested in the town and in their department. And, you know, you mentioned about Dave and Kathy, they work very closely together on a lot of programs, too. So and, you know, and they've even tried to have some of the younger people intermingle with the old, you know, the seniors.
And so for our next meeting is Monday, March 21st. And the budget review will be the Board of Education. So we will have the opportunity to question them on the budget. And I know you got the budget.
We got the Board of Selectmen got the presentation that we adopted. We, so except for me, I saw it at about 3:00 in the afternoon. The rest of the board did not see their actual packet from the Board of Education until the meeting started. So really didn't have a chance to go through it and ask questions. So one of the items on our agenda tomorrow night is discussion and recommendations or comments on the Board of Ed budget. So we'll be forwarding those to you. We know we'll do it quickly because you have to have those by Monday. So I'll finish after I meet. I'll contact you Thursday and try and, you know, get them over to you as quickly as possible.
Okay. Sounds good. Any, anything else? Anyone? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor? I, motion to adjourn, or the meeting to adjourn.